I'll just ask you, public comments. Mary Nunn. Let's, I guess we can begin the interview. Mr. David Reckup for. Welcome, and thank you for your interest in City Munising and for taking the time to come up and interview for the city commissioner.
I've been drawn around the commission for the opportunity to come speak to you. It's a pleasure just being considered.
Oh, thank you. Well, Debbie said we can get started. Do you want to start us off?
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it. Tell us why you want to be the city manager of Munising and point out what particular skills and experiences you possess that make you a good fit for us.
Well, so I've been serving the city of Westland in a capacity as chairman of their landing commission. And through that experience, I've discovered that I prefer public service to the practice of law. It's very similar dynamic in the practice of law. Part of the focus is we're trying to help somebody through, but there's always the economic factors of providing justice for people. That's not necessarily true of public service. You can focus entirely on your goals and actually helping people. And that's been a direction that I wanted to go. My job search in that range was initially focused on building and planning zoning issues because I had a lot of experience in that realm. And of course, that's a thing that I definitely raised, that sort of analysis to the city manager position. But through that job searching, I also noted that a lot of my skills are fairly relevant to the skills of a city manager. As far as Munising is concerned, Munising was appealing to me for a number of reasons. Number one, one of my experiences is in a small town, Alton, which I'm also considering, but they're very much going very slow in their search. But the small-town life is appealing to me. That's where I completed my undergraduate. The pace is slower, people are more considerate, both of what they're doing and of other people, they seem to be. And in small towns, things move slower, but in a good way. It's very hard to explain to anybody who has a big-city experience where everything just moves fast and is very intense. Certainly, the movements in a small town are judicious, but they just don't have the same speed and intensity that you see when you get in big cities. Of course, I'm kind of a butterfly. I could exist in both roles, but you asked why I would be interested in Munising, and that would be one of the reasons. I've spent the day kind of cruising around Munising, and the people are just fantastic, very friendly. Very clean. Awesome, thank you.
If offered the position of city manager, how will you go about getting to know the community and say, connect with stakeholders, residents, and promote a sense of community?
Well, I feel that the only way to really get to know a community is to do so face-to-face. Like, if it were a much larger community, I'd have to go about it doing a kind of a town hall meeting, or by all means, go door-to-door. But I think visiting people where they're at in this community of this size is probably the best way to connect to the community. As I said, I already visited the DDA offices and some of the local business owners and got to know them a little bit. Of course, they don't know me from Adam's. And I was totally disguised. I had a baseball cap, cargo pants. So it was nice to get at least a day's feel for the community mind. But yeah, simply just asking people directly in conversation, what motivates them, what they would like to see as far as their city providing them, that's pretty much the only way to do it in a community of this size.
Can you continue on that same vein? The city of Munising is a small community with a unique personality and solid traditions. What should every aspiring city manager know about working in small towns, and what special personality traits do you possess that will make your tenure successful?
Well, I've done a lot of looking into the job of the city manager, what it means to people. One of the things that I encountered was a city manager that wrote an article, I guess, where he described what it was like to be a city manager. He described it as spending the morning negotiating a contract and working numbers, and the evening listening to some lady tell him about her neighbor's dog barking at her fence line. And that's the general life of a city manager. And that is very appealing to someone like wired like myself. I went into law literally to listen to people's troubles and try to help them find solutions that work. And as far as what I feel would make me a good city manager, having never been a city manager before, that's my expectation that I would bring the most strength to. Obviously, I have other aptitudes. I would have made it through law school if I wasn't strategic and organized. But there are definitely things about the position that I'm sure I'm going to need to grow into, if I'm lucky enough to be so.
When we call on the employees who have worked with you over the years, or your peers, what will they tell us about you? And tell us one phrase that the employees or your peers would use that maybe your bosses or elected officials might not.
That is a very interesting question.
No, you're the third person.
Well, it's very thought-provoking. So my fellow employees would almost certainly find me reliable and as a source of information. It's kind of how I'm wired, I like to know things. I have an inexhaustible desire to gather information and to be that resource. Even in my hobbies, one of my longtime hobbies is I'm a tournament official for a card game. And I'm very well-known for being a councilman mentor. I train other judges. And that's primarily what people would identify me as, as a resource and in a lot of ways, a teacher. Now, there was a second part of that, and I was so focused on trying to figure out how I was going to answer the first part. Can you repeat it for me, please?
Tell us one phrase that employees or your peers would use that your bosses or elected officials might not.
Wow. That is a very thought-provoking question. So I have a tendency to be very structured. That's both an advantage and a challenge. But the thing is, I have been able to deal with it over time, and it has been a struggle in a lot of respects. It's like, I have a tendency to be awfully frank, and some people don't like a stern hand. I don't know about a phrase, though. Four, eleven words, probably not appropriate.
Are you more of a leader or a manager? And tell us how that description informs the kind of administrator you are.
Interesting. Those are three very, very loaded terms, administrator, manager, and leader. Well, so this is a good opportunity for me to talk about my fraternity. Alpha Phi Omega is a service fraternity dedicated to the concepts of leadership fraternity and community service. And we actually train in leadership development, and that was one of my focuses while I was serving, both as a brother and as a staff member. We train on a servant leadership structure. So a lot of people have their own definitions or conceptions of how to actually train or do leadership. But in our experience and our training, we find that the best leaders are those that facilitate other people achieving their goals, as opposed to being a person who simply sets goals and expects people to follow. Certainly, that's what a manager would do. A manager takes direction and figures out how best to get from point A to point B. And certainly, that's a thing that I've regularly done in the practice of law. You have to do that all the time, get from a problem to a solution. As far as administration is concerned, that is a whole skill that I'm pretty sure I'm going to need a lot of learning to do.
A manager is often in the midst of a tug-of-war between departments, or employees, residents, elected officials, neighborhoods, or all of those groups at once. What is your go-to strategy with dealing with conflict or divisive priorities?
Conflict resolution skills, that's what you're asking about.
Yeah.
Conflict resolution is very difficult. You've got to meet people where they're at and understand why the conflict actually exists in our neighborhood. Certainly, I have to do a lot of conflict resolution to stay out of it because that's just inefficient. Normally, best to find wavelength positions that keep you out of actual problems because it's more efficient for the clients. The important thing is that you've got to rise above the actual conflict to avoid escalating it. And, you know, that's a challenge sometimes. Some people can be very intractable, and you've got to figure out why. It's mostly about finding out motivations and meeting people where they're at.
Could you please tell us about one of the more complicated projects that you've dealt with or managed, in how many partners, funding streams, that kind of stuff? You've got to look at your face if you've got to, you know, if it's like attorney-client privilege or something.
That is in fact the look on my face.
Okay, all right.
How many of them am I actually authorized by my clients to talk about? Well, so there was a recent thing that I had to deal with. I had a client ask me to look at a business entity, make sure that it was legitimate, and it turns out to have blossomed into this massive thing. So he was having an issue where he had a contractor that was supposed to add an addition onto his house. The contractor took half the money and did absolutely no work. And as we discovered over time, my assumption was going to be that this contractor was simply got in over his head, didn't complete the, didn't start the work because things pile up. I figured all it's going to take is a phone call, reminding him that, because I've had this a number of different times with a number of different issues, not necessarily houses, but maybe I resolved with a simple letter and a phone call. Mechanic that had had a classic car for an extraordinarily long period of time. Just simply reminding him that he had responsibilities to just clear it up. This did not happen that way. Apparently, when I did the research on his dealings, he was a habitual, what I can only describe as cowardice. And it resulted in a prosecution. And I had to take that through step-by-step, it's very complex. But the thing is, I guess, your question was how to take a project, even a complex one, from beginning to finish, even when there's complexities. And the issue is that you just take it a step at a time, and you make the complexities as simple as you can within reason. And I hope this commercial version of that answers your question, but I really kind of just wanted to talk about that first, because it recently just finished.
I get it. One of the other places that we talked about in the previous location just dealt with something similar. You know, but like we told the other interview, it's your answer. Like, if you're happy with that answer, then we're excited to hear it, so.
Excuse me, how do you handle the negative social media that often criticizes the commission or various city operations?
Yeah, so I have actually had some experience with that. We, in Westland, in the while I was on the landing commission, we had a number of new uses, marijuana uses. And of course, we have very nearby neighboring municipalities. And one, they chose to put their, they were much faster on the acceptances than we were. And they chose to put one of them in this seedy industrial area right next to the major landfill by Westland over in Wayne. And I'm going to be as candid as I possibly can be, and I mean no offense to anybody who might watch this video and take offense at it, but in my opinion, they've got a guard house out front, they've got floodlights pointing in. It practically looks like a prison yard. And it doesn't speak well of the newly acceptable nature of the business. And what I was stating for the record, in my capacity and laying down my reasoning for wanting a particular use, we prefer in Westland to have a more retail-friendly store facing, much like Munising has. And that's for a number of reasons. Like, you're already fighting against years and years of prejudice for that sort of business type. And perpetuating that by making the provisioning uses look seedy, it doesn't speak well for that. And I got misquoted in the paper, and the affluent family, who I was unaware, actually owns that particular business that I referenced but did not call out directly, they were very, very upset. And the best I could do was apologize for the gaffe, clarify what my position actually is and why it's there, and that it actually does benefit. I don't fault the individual that owns that place for the look or the location of his business. I'm actually upset for him because I don't think that Wayne is doing the business a service by locating it there, limiting the location to that sort of I-1 designation.
There are many strategies for economic and community development. What do you see as Munising's most pressing development issue, and what approaches might you suggest for the city?
So, thank you for that. So pressing development issue is Munising appears to have a relatively stable compared to a lot of the municipalities that I've visited. There are challenges, for sure. And, you know, I've been on your website, I've actually seen them enumerated. I think that simply the diversity of offerings is a challenge that should be addressed that I didn't see on the list of priorities, priority challenges. We have a lot of uses that are thematically towards a community that is statistically aging, statistically conservative. These are good things to build on, but we can also expand on them and maybe make the community a little bit more inviting and widen the tourist base.
How successful have you been in securing grant funds in the past? And looking at the state and federal landscape going forward, what projects with external funding streams would you be concentrating on here?
Thank you for that question. And unfortunately, I don't have a very good answer for it. Grant writing and grant seeking is going to have to be a growth area for me. Fortunately, I've spoken with my mayor in Westland, and I have extremely good connection with Westland's administration. They are willing to put me in touch with their, and regular contact with their person and people that write grants. And as I said, that's going to be a learning curve for me. As far as my prediction for the availability of grant funds, that's going to be a difficult thing moving forward because, as you're aware, grant funds come from the federal government, and currently, the federal government is a little bit frenetic on what they will and will not appropriate money for. Grant writing might be a little bit difficult for a few years.
From what you've learned about us, what do you think our two biggest challenges will be in the next three years? How would you tackle them, and what processes would you follow?
Well, I'm a little bit worried about how the economy is going to develop. And of course, Munising as a tourist destination, tourism is one of the, and entertainment is one of the top cuts when people tighten the belt. So certainly watching closely to see what our numbers would do, what Munising's numbers would do for the income, comparing that from years past to current trends. I think that's going to be one of the challenges that we would want to keep our eyes open on. Was there a second part that I didn't cover?
No. How would you tackle and process, what processes would you follow?
So more than just watching it to see what we're doing, trying to strategically plan for what we see. If the numbers do start to wane, trying to figure out cost-effective ways or ways to make travel to the upper peninsula and across the land bridges to the upper peninsula area a little bit more accessible. Because of course, once people aren't here, the charm of this place should actually make them very happy and want to come back as long as they can find it.
All right. What is the most important skill or talent that a city manager can have when it comes to the relationship between the city commission and the city manager? And is there any kind of time that you remember that you had to rely on that skill to help improve our relationships?
By far. So I realize, especially with the structure that Munising has, the city manager is very... I read your city charter, the city manager has an awful lot of executive authority. And that has to be tempered with cooperation. I mean, it's in between the lines, but it's spoken all the way through your charter. If there's a conflict between the direction and intention of the city council, the city commission, and the city manager, there's plenty of areas where the city manager can cause trouble. And when there's trouble and turbulence in city governance, things just simply don't get done. And that's unfortunately not good for a small community like Munising that needs to be dexterous. So, yeah. And I very much have to do a lot of diplomacy. And once again, just like conflict resolution earlier, thank you, John. Conflict resolution is all about figuring out people's motivations, why they're taking the position that they're taking, and just meeting them where they're at and trying to kind of come around. Women's solutions are always best solutions.
What did it look like the last time an elected official, employee, or resident tried to push you into changing your position that you were holding? What determines when you hold your ground versus switching directions?
Well, that's a good question, quite a good question. So I don't have a tendency to be stubborn when it comes to my positions with administration for that. I prefer to be right. So most of the time, I'm taking factual positions that really are attractive. The most recent thing was, and you can watch it, actually, all of my meetings that I run are on YouTube. It was one of the last meetings, we were discussing a use. The issue was, and I'm going to try to relay it as quickly as I possibly can, I don't want to waste the whole bunch of time or make anybody on the video fall asleep. So the issue was, we had a semi-truck parking lot use that wanted to expand their use to a lot that was, to an adjacent lot that was listed as I-1, like a house. The issue is, is that the light industrial use that they wanted to move into was directly abutting an R3 use, reasonably heavy residential use, which ideally, if they were going to do this and it would work, the R3 would be a use for like an apartment building or something like that. And the trucking use would not be actually using the I-1 district for a semi-truck or trailer parking lot, it'd be for cars. And we were having difficulty because the R3 wanted to make homes. And the truck use was not in compliance with dust abatement in the use that they were currently using. So they were kicking up an awful lot of dust, it happened for years. They cut down trees, which allowed the dust that they were already kicking up to cause an even bigger problem for their neighbors. And of course, we like good neighbors. So we were having an issue with the balancing of the equities there. And I had a difference of opinion with... And I had a difference of opinion with one of our commissioners. Commissioner wanted to state his opinion to not allow the use based on what I would refer to as a political position as opposed to a statutory one. And he took the political position, the political term that I used, to mean partisan. And he went on a little bit of a tirade on the record. And I simply pointed out to him that I use my terminology very precisely. And when I say political, I literally mean advocating a particular policy. And it was just about, once again, it was just about understanding where he was coming from, understanding that he wasn't angry necessarily at me or something, and recognizing in real time and on camera that there was a simple way to defuse the situation.
Thank you.
How would you go about challenging the city process for improvement or innovation?
Is that a question about how you would change the legislation?
Uh, no.
Because that's kind of what you guys do.
Where, change the way the city does business, basically.
So not knowing how the city currently conducts its business, business is best conducted in a laid-back, as open as possible and as precise as possible. Like certainly, I'm a contract attorney by current profession. And the city contracts, I would want to take a look at them, make sure that they were very clear that we actually, that rather than addressing cost overruns if they do happen on a half-basis, try to look into making sure that they're either A) predicted by the contract, or, and those people making bids appropriately make their bids, knowing that they would have potential liability if they underbid. Other than that, like the, simply with clarity and also understanding. Like there's definitely in every contract, there's an amount of flexibility that's there. But at the same time, if somebody knows that they can make a low bid and then bump up the price to something that we didn't expect later on, it's unfair to potential contractors that make honest bids.
Okay, thank you.
Give an example of a personal or work-related issue where your integrity or character was challenged, and how did you respond?
My character and integrity is constantly challenged. I always meet it the exact same way. I take a very close look at my ethics, how I feel, how my beloved mother would actually be proud of her son, how I responded to it. But I find that my ethical obligations as an attorney is an excellent guide for how I should conduct myself in almost every situation. But, yeah. Very regularly, there are challenges. And we encounter them every day. It's not just a city manager, or a city commissioner, or an attorney that faces ethical challenges. Everybody does. Constantly. Everybody has their questions, whether they're going to listen to their better angels or their baser instincts. And I think that defines us individually as people. And, you know, the thing is, is that the enlightened person knows that they have both capacities and prefers their better angels.
What would be your strategy for new business recruitment in the city?
So there are a number of challenges that I've read that the website suggests. One of them that I noticed was a desire to attract younger people and to keep them here. One of the things that I'd like to explore, see if there's an industry of some sort, specifically light industrial industry, like a tech industry or something, that we can actually encourage to locate in a very picturesque area as their home base. That would actually allow us a lot of flexibility to entice younger people to be here for working there and experiencing and raising a family here. Currently, Munising is challenged on those metrics. It's a great place to raise a family, but other places are more attractive to do that. And the thing is, is that all we really honestly need to do, if that is a focus that we'd like to pursue, is to increase our ability to provide that. And the people should follow as long as there's a way for them to earn a living and raise a family and have the fixtures of life that they would experience.
What is your experience with DPW, Department of Public Works?
So I don't do much in the city of Westland with the Department of Public Works, but I do have contact with them. Them and the Parks Department. I know contracts, and that's what I could really tackle there. Department of Public Works needs to function on providing the structural infrastructure for things like sewage, waste removal, things like that. And of course, managing their activities and making sure that they're operating efficiently. That's, once again, it's going to be one of those areas that I'd have a learning curve in, but it's obviously a challenge that I would take on.
Do you have zoning administration experience? I mean, you do.
I do. It's primarily what I've been doing for the city of Westland. And of course, as an attorney, one of my strengths is property law.
What is your experience with working with unions and union negotiations?
Once again, unions and union negotiations are our contracts. And unless I'm remembering incorrectly, we have two unions in Munising. The POAM, the Police Officers Union, and the AFA, the firefighters. So obviously, those are two very influential and, I guess, powerful, and I'll qualify that in a moment, organizations. They'd be very difficult, obviously, to negotiate with because what happens when firefighters and police officers go on strike? Bad things. So they have an awful lot of unequal negotiating position. But, I mean, difficult negotiations are the purview of a contract attorney. So I'm not going to say that I'm better than any of the other candidates, but I do understand what I'd be negotiating there.
That does it for the organized questions. I do have one follow-up, though, if I may. Do you have experience with TIP districts and TIP financing, or tax incremental financing?
So I'm not on the TIPA board over at, over in Westland, but I do have regular conversations with the TIPA. We've actually, in Westland, we've actually used the TIPA funds quite effectively to, over the last number of years, to make significant improvements in the city. So I do know that it's, that there's a lot of flexibility and useful ways to put the TIPA budget that's available. And certainly, if that's a thing that we want to focus on, I have plenty of resources that I can do chat to. But as far as directed involvement, I really don't have that experience. I have plenty of contacts to recruit.
That is all the questions, like I said, that we do have. Do you have questions for us?
Sure. A lot of it's about living in Munising. Obviously, it's a very different world in the Upper Peninsula than it is in the Lower Peninsula. So I noticed that there's, so one of the challenges that I saw on the website was the availability of housing and the different housing that's available, housing options. What have we, what has Munising done in that regard? Obviously, it's something that's very interesting to me, having a lot of experience in zoning and planning.
I'm going to defer to you.
We are seven years into a commercial residential development kitty corner from this building on that large empty lot over there, which would include 32 units of workforce housing, which is our need. We had Michigan Economic Development Corporation funding online for that, which got pulled at the last minute by a congressional district that has more clout than we have. And now we're forced to go with Mr. Low-Income Housing Tax Credits to finance it. And we're working with the Sioux Tribe for an organization called Investor UP to close the gap financing for that project. It will come to fruition, not this year, but soon. And 32 units of housing would be a huge impact on a community this small.
Excellent. So when I visited the DDA, I spoke to a very nice lady over there. And she said that the housing is kind of spread out. Is that correct? It's very interesting. The, I noticed that in between the, in between the cities, unlike what I'm used to, where the cities kind of blend into each other, up here, the cities are fairly separate. Do we find that that's a challenge for, because sometimes, and let me share this, sometimes we can focus on things a little bit less in the city of Westland because we know Canton does it very, very well, or because we don't even remotely want to compete with Livonia. Do we find any of that going on here? Like we don't want to do things because, say, Marquette does it so much better that we can't even?
I don't think so, not necessarily.
To a certain extent.
I mean, Marquette, yeah, is kind of, you know, the more, you know, a lot of the shopping, but you've got Escondaba, and you've got Manstik as well. There are things that definitely we could improve upon as far as. We have only one grocery store now, we had two.
You won't find any big box stores in Munising because they're 45 miles away. And there's no customer base here.
Yeah, I was going to say, they won't come here.
I think one of the other things, too, is that Alga County has 10 separate municipal governments for a population of 7,000 that's not incarcerated. Actually, our fourth-largest year-round municipality is the prison. So when you get to stuff like that, it makes it a little bit difficult because of things that could happen in our neighboring townships are not necessarily what county seat or what, you know, an outpost community or something that is marketed the way that Munising is marketed because of Torrance. It makes it very difficult to try to figure out where you want to go and use those resources. But at the exact same time, there's not necessarily the strongest amount of interaction between each other. I think the best examples are fire departments. All the fire departments for Alga County do mutual aid discussions where they actually purchase equipment that helps them aid each other in ways that others wouldn't. So I don't want to make it all sound bad. It's just, it is a very unique situation compared to, you know, more urban areas or areas where, you know, you have to have a different colored police car because now you're in a different set of rules and ordinances kind of deal.
Well, it does sound an awful lot like there's a lot of cooks in a kitchen for a small number of people with very different ideas of what's important. And the reason why I ask the question is twofold. Number one, like you mentioned, there's, when cities are closer or more connected, there's opportunities for resource sharing. Certainly, Westland and Maine did that for an awful long time with their police enforcement, their, even the judicial. The two courts were very connected. As a matter of fact, I think for a while, Wayne was doing all the Judge Rocker love stuff. But the other one is, I was noticing in looking at the website that there seems to be a lot of focus on the infrastructure and the physical offerings. But I didn't see much in the way, especially advertising on the website in the way of cultural festivals or things that would tend to bring community together and bring them out and enjoy the natural beauty of Munising. I think that might be a nice thing for us to try to explore. As long as another neighboring community doesn't do it so much better, then it would be pointless for us to even draw.
Well, we do have, check the DDA or the Chamber website. We do have festivals and races. We've got the Fixed Rock Days. That's something that, and that brings Upper Michigan residents together. The cruises operate, any local, or any residents.
It's Alga County residents?
Yeah, the Alga County residents can take the cruise for free. So it's really trying to promote. Fourth of July, same thing. We have our Fixed Rocks Road races. Got an extensive mountain bike trail system, and that brings, and we do races. We've got two ones, I believe, next weekend, and then another one at the end of September. So we're bringing those together, trying to turn them into more festival-like events. So, yeah, no, but I understand what you're saying, and that's exactly why.
And I'd like to see a lot of that progress. Whether I'm fortunate enough to be selected or not, I'd like to see that advertised on the website so that people can, the people who are not from the Upper Peninsula are not as knowledgeable about what Munising is about can actually go there and say, oh, look, there's people having fun in Munising. We should plan to go there. The website seems to be missing a little bit of that. But of course, none of this is intended to be terribly critical. It's just an outsider's view. And once again, I'd need to, if I were so fortunate as to be selected and represent the city as their manager, it's something that I'd want to look into, seeing what we've done and if there's a different or alternate way to approach it. There's plenty of ways up the mountain, we just have to get up them.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. Do you have any other questions for us?
No. I just, I was very much appreciative of the time and the attention. It's a great honor. Know that you, that you all are obviously aware, it is not easy to find a job these days. And certainly, the feedback that you don't get when you're doing these job hunts, it can be very disenfranchising. And the feedback, Glenn has been amazing, to be perfectly honest. It is support. But just being selected to be here to speak to you, it's very satisfying. And thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak to you.
Well, we appreciate it.
Whether I'm accepted or not, it's been a distinct pleasure coming to visit.
Thank you, and we appreciate your time as well.
Very much so.
If I can walk you out?
Mayor Perry. Thank you so much for your time, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Sue?
Yeah.
Thank God somebody else posted, our website sucks. It's so bad. I got, the, the first thing I thought of, the second that he started talking about the firefighters union is I'm pretty sure it says that Chief Anderson is the current head of DPW on the website, and which is why that would be a reasonable mistake to me.
Say, come up and join the party?
It's kind of hard to hear from over there.
Okay, item E, Commission Discussion.
I was not impressed.
No, I, I have a, I have a firm on him. Little classers.
And Glenn, you won't disagree with the second, the state manager's job description is probably the toughest job that there is. I mean, there's a incredibly diverse set of skills required, and, and BD doesn't have them.
Well, yeah, most of his answers were, oh, there's going to be a learning curve on that.
Right.
There's going to be a learning.
Or no answer.
Yes. So, that one, I mean, and I do want input as well. I mean, it's, it would be worth it.
Looking for, finding, yeah, a lot of legal issues on your filming and stuff. You would be perfect.
Sure.
As a city manager, but as, as a director of planning here.
He almost needs to be a deputy for a while. Sort of like kind of make that next step where, as a municipality, I don't think we've got really the capability to have a middle or a JV position to, to kind of go to anyway.
No.
At his point on Westland, I mean, that's an eighty, ninety thousand population.
Sure.
It's one of the bigger western suburbs of one county. And they do it for the, I mean, you could go and ask for all that information because he knows all the partners' money, so he doesn't know himself.
Well, and how long are they going to be willing to? Yeah, and that, that was my thing.
You never know on that. They do have likely mayor, strong mayors.
So.
Well, so, we really only have one choice here, which is kind of scary.
Well, and I guess that's where, I mean, I'll, we asked Sue, like, your input, and, you know, what you, I don't know, my other line to ask would be?
No, I don't.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Because, again, you know your jobs, you guys are the experts, and, um, one, yeah. If Kyle would be somebody?
I mean, I think, from what we could hear, I mean, great as all, but I think, based off of what we know now currently with the current status quo, I think that number two, Kyle, was definitely the closest to what we are used to working with and functioning with.
That's what I thought.
Yep. I think he had a lot of excellent answers. One of the biggest fears that we've had a lot of the way is that somebody jumping in and wanting to change everything, and I do appreciate that. You know, I got a job, I got to learn from the bottom up, and I appreciate that.
He might be worn out at the end of the day. But it's all his level of energy. I, I say that kidding, like, I think he's got great energy, and he's very self-aware of the position.
And I, I appreciate the observation, but it's also incumbent upon subordinates to adapt themselves to a different management style because you're going to have a different management style. What I liked about him, he's very, very open, very personable, very affable. When he didn't know, he said he didn't know. And he kept emphasizing, the first thing I need to do is sit down and learn the community and learn the staff and learn the employees, which was the exact right answer I was looking for.
So, any other discussion on candidate one? Joseph? Three, I suppose.
I don't know, it's, it's kind of rough, just like when you start thinking about, like, what happens if Kyle says no?
Right.
Then, I, I mean, the attorney was kind of, I, I remember saying two A, two B. Like, I wanted to have at least somebody to look at that was going to be, you know, brand new to the position to kind of compare and contrast to see how valuable the first applicant was. Because, I mean, that's a better start, but I don't, I don't know if that's too long in one spot without anything different. Like, I almost would rather get somebody straight out of college than, like, it, it, it just screams of, of, you know, getting them that habits.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we need to strike while the iron is hot.
Okay.
Can we get him on the phone?
Well, we have to vote on it first.
I know.
Whether he gets cell service, I don't worry about that.
Uh, okay.
So, we have language here.
Yep. Are we ready to move on to item?
I think so.
Okay. So, entertain a motion to extend the conditional offer of employment to Kyle Harris for the position of city manager, conditioned on successful completion of a background check and tentative employment agreement.
Also moved?
Of support. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Wilkinson, supported by Commissioner Prunick, to extend the conditional offer to Kyle Harris. Any more discussion? Are you none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, item G, now, I, just to discuss and maybe reflect on, create an ad hoc committee to initiate negotiations on, on terms of a mutually acceptable employment agreement.
And I will say again, I, I'm comfortable having the labor negotiation committee do that.
Okay, and going back to my question to Glenn, and it's, I'm just asking this candidly, is this a service, if you were to assist us, is this a service over and above what we're already contracted with you?
No, we could if you wish to.
I don't think, I, I won't speak for Jordan.
I, I shouldn't be spending your money, but I'm glad to do it. From my perspective, from the league's perspective. But I have been, I've been asked.
Okay.
And I have participated, so, and of course, you already have a, you know, a, a draft agreement that Devon has. So, you've got everything you need other than, you know, we'll be filling in.
It's, it is, it's filling in the blanks. I won't speak for Jordan, but I'm very green on this. There'll be a learning curve.
Just, sorry to interrupt, but who else is on that labor relationship? It's just the two of you?
Uh, yeah, and Devon has been.
He's city manager.
The, yeah, he's a non-boarding participant.
Okay, all right. Is that something that Devon is capable of doing, given his timeline right now?
That, that we'd have to ask, you know, I mean, again, this is all sobering now.
No, no, that, that's totally fine. Um, I, you know, my, my thing is, is, oh, and please, I mean this out of all due respect and don't want to cause any fights, but it would probably be best if somebody from city staff can help out that role for Devon's end, if Devon cannot do it.
I think that's a good idea, and I think the city clerk would be a good person to do that.
I was doing my darndest to try to not pick somebody, so.
I sure am loving to.
Yeah, I'm dying. That sounds so exciting.
And, you know, quite frankly, I don't think it's, it's very time-consuming.
No.
Especially if we can get him on the phone.
Okay, so, I guess that, would that be considered an ad hoc committee?
Yeah, I, I move, I move then that the city clerk be added to Labor Relations Committee to negotiate the contract with the prospective city manager.
And I'll support.
Okay, so, it's been moved by Commissioner Mr. Jordan, supported by Commissioner Burge, to add the, the city clerk to the current labor committee, labor negotiations committee to negotiate the terms for a mutually accepted employment agreement. Any more discussion? Is there any others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Any other public comment?
So, who's the other one on that committee?
Yes, Jordan and myself.
And that ad hoc committee will also take the negative aspect of telling the other two applicants that they did not get the job?
I think that's one. But it's that one.
And then who's your city attorney, just?
Uh, Bill Nordine.
You eventually got a new one, or?
That's him. That's Phil Nordine.
Okay.
No, it's not. All right, any other public comments? Are you none? Motion in. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll issue a motion.
Um, looked by Commissioner Prunick, seconded by Commissioner Mr. Jordan. Adjourn. All those in favor?
Are these not public documents?
All those in favor? Aye. Awesome, thanks, everybody.